Welcome to the January 23, 2024, meeting of the Oshkosh Council. If the city clerk would please take the role.
Hayes? Present.
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
Mugabauer?
Here.
Seven present.
Leading us into invocation this evening will be Councilmember Hayes.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
This evening, we have Henry from Webster Stanley Elementary School here to help lead us in the pledge. Henry, if you wouldn't mind coming on up. Mom and dad, probably a better photo up here than standing in the back. Come on up here, bud.
When you're ready, you start us off.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Nicely done, Henry. Thank you very much for helping lead us in the pledge tonight. I have a certificate here for you, all right, saying thank you for joining us this evening. I have a question for you. So you're at Webster Stanley Elementary. Who's your teacher and what's your favorite subject?
My teacher is Mrs. Cornelius, or Mrs. C. My favorite subject is gym or recess.
Excellent choice. Excellent.
I happen to like his class choices.
Oh, yeah.
Mine's lunch. Lunch is mine.
Well, Kelly, he's got a tough act to follow.
I do, I do. But I'm very excited to announce that we have a new chief building official. Jerry, if you want to come up. Jerry Fabbish has actually, has been with the city for, gosh, 13, 14 years as our plumbing inspector and is now our chief building official. So Jerry is in Oshkosh, lives in Oshkosh here and has owned his own business before coming over to the public side. And I think he's going to be, do great things for our division. So Jerry, do you want to talk about a few things?
Yeah, I'm honored to have this position. I consider Oshkosh my hometown. I've lived here for over 30 years and I love the growth and development that Oshkosh has had over the years.
Well, congratulations on the new role and helping move Oshkosh forward. So congratulations.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Next up, Mark, you want to do the introduction?
I will do the introduction just very briefly. Our new library director, Darrell Eshtay. I got Darrell started last Monday and had an opportunity to meet him. And we went to the Chamber Annual Meeting where I had an opportunity to introduce him to a lot of folks in the community, but hadn't introduced him to the council yet, so we thought we'd have him here. So Darrell, if you want to come up and introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, sir. I'm Darrell Eshtay. I'm the new library director here in the city of Oshkosh, coming up from having spent the last 11 years in West Des Moines, Iowa. And I'm coming to town with the hope that I, that I and the residents and the council and the library board and all of the stakeholders around who have an interest in the library, that we can all collaborate on moving the library forward, making improvements as needed and seeking out the efficiencies and the betterments that will serve this community, which I'm digging thoroughly as best I can. And if anybody, it's been a while since you've had a library card or haven't visited the library in a little while, be sure to come by the library, get a library card and say hey to staff and say hey to me and I'll be there. So most of the time, I'm betting.
Well, I've never met a library director who isn't willing to shill for everyone to get a library card, so well done there. Welcome to the community. We're happy to have you and leading the library over there, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We do have a proclamation this evening. This is for Transit Equity Day, which is February 4th of this year. This one we'll read and then I know we have Transportation Director Collins here as well as, I think there's a member of the Transportation Committee here as well. So whereas Rosa Parks was an iconic figure in the movement for social justice and racial equality and played a major role in the inception of the civil rights movement that ended legal segregation in the United States, and whereas the immediate focus of Rosa Parks historic protests was the unequal access of African-Americans to public transit, and whereas affordable, reliable public transit is an essential public service on par with utilities such as water and electricity, and whereas paratransit is a necessary component for any public transit system to ensure accessibility for people with disabilities who require it, and any expansion of public transit necessitates further strengthening of a paratransit so that it minimally is held to the same reliability and timeline standards as other parts of the system. And whereas transitioning our transportation system from excessive automobile dependence to public transit is key to our transitioning our economy from fossil fuels to renewable energy and cutting our greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas the required expansion of public transit to address the climate crisis provides an unprecedented opportunity to continue the tradition of Rosa Parks and the civil rights movement by ensuring that transit systems are affordable and accessible and that people of color, economically disadvantaged people, people with disabilities and other marginalized populations have full access to the benefits of public transit. And whereas the public, the growth of public transit will also reduce automotive pollutants that have the worst impacts on our communities closest to highways and other major roads, which tend to be disproportionately communities of color and economically disadvantaged communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Oshkosh recognizes February 4th, 2024, as Transit Equity Day, and be it resolved that the city of Oshkosh will be mindful in our work of continuing racial, economic and other inequalities in access to adequate public transit and the need for affordable and accessible transit. Transportation Director Collins, right there? Yeah, here we go.
Here you go. Yep. Honored to accept this on behalf of Go Transit. We are called to Go Transit, our staff and drivers.
Thank you.
Sorry. I have a couple of quick words. I'm just, I'm honored to accept this on behalf of Go Transit. Go Transit, we are proud, our staff and drivers, to continue the tradition of equitable, reliable, safe and affordable transportation here in Oshkosh as the public transportation agency. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Actually, I think Deb Martin was also here from the Transit Board. If you'd like to come up and we talked, if you'd like to have a few moments. There you go.
Thank you. Yes, I'm on the Transit Advisory Board, but also I'm a part of Sierra Club Wisconsin Transportation Group and Esther Oshkosh Transportation Group. A few years ago, we looked at the fact that our students had to pay to ride the city bus to school, and so I was part of that group to get that to change, and we know what a great impact it's had for our students. We know we have 40-plus percent of our students are at lower reduced lunch, so we knew that the cost of riding the bus was expensive to them. And that last year, the UW Oshkosh did a study about the effects that's been for the children to be able to ride the bus. And what we saw, when I was involved, the big point was to make sure that the students didn't have to pay that money. If you had two or three children and it's $3 a day to ride the bus, that can be onerous. We found that was true because they interviewed parents and they interviewed students. The other thing that it allowed students to do was get to a job. It allowed them to go to the store and pick up medicine when their mom was, or parent was sick, and it allowed them to meet with their friends or go to the library. There was benefits that we hadn't even thought about for their own mental health, which we know is an issue for students these days. The other thing that we found out was that buses are great. And I've said this before when I've been here, is how many of you have actually ridden one of our buses? And I appreciate that we got some hands up. The other thing to do is we have great drivers. So what we'll be doing on February 5th this year, because the 4th is a Sunday and our buses don't run on Sunday, but we'll be at the transit station downtown for a couple hours in the afternoon, thanking our drivers, getting the riders to write a little thank you to the drivers that we will then take to their, where they have their breaks, their break room, and we're going to have some snacks for the drivers. Anyway, we appreciate, we have great buses in our city. There's always room to maybe look at lanes, and I know we do that kind of thing, but just to know that, that our drivers are well-respected by our riders and that we've made a difference. We're even getting now by the numbers, more of the younger children are riding the bus, the grade school kids. So we just, we be proud that we're doing that for the students in our city, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation. This is a TIF Development Agreement presentation from Aligned Medical Oshkosh, which is ThetaCare Freight Health. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Jenny Nicolai, Vice President with ThetaCare, and I am joined by Ryan Marks, Vice President of Facility Planning and Development with Freight Health. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Our intent this evening is specific to the health campus that's planned for the northwest corner of Oregon Street and West Sixth Avenue. First and foremost, we intend to provide you with an update on our progress, to share some of the challenges that we're experiencing at the site, and to request your consideration for TIF assistance. ThetaCare and Freight Health share a commitment to this community with a focus on expanding access to care where our patients live and work. As we previously shared, we know that nearly 72% of residents live east of I-41 and generate about 45% of ED visits. We also know that most healthcare services today are located west of I-41, leaving our east-side residents more than 15 minutes away from the care that they may need to receive. We're excited to continue to work with you and believe that our health campus really complements the developments that you have underway within Oshkosh. Our plans allow us the opportunity to expand and grow based not only on the needs of today, but also the flexibility to quickly adapt to the needs of the community in the future. Next, Ryan will highlight our site plan. He'll also outline some of the current challenges and then share our request for support.
Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, council members. Again, Ryan Marks, Vice President of Planning and Development for Freight and ThetaCare. You guys probably all know the site better than us. It's been around for a long time, has a really storied history. We love the site, are really excited about the possibilities that we have there, and been studying it a long time. We knew it was going to have some challenges, no doubt, but as we dug into it, it's created a bit of a spider web of other challenges that we've learned and have tackled with our team. This is just a real high overview of the site plan, if you haven't had a chance to see it yet. The angled building out towards Oregon and towards the river, that is the microhospital component, that's a single-story component that will be able to be expanded. And the largest block kind of moving south towards Sixth Avenue is our ambulatory surgery center and medical office building that will be two stories to start and also able to expand. Just wanted to show you this diagram to give you a sense of the size of the site. You know, the building footprint is one thing, but you know, we're going to be touching the whole site in some manner, cleaning up all the contaminated soil and water that is there. And in every shovel of dirt that we have that comes out, we have to have in a soil management plan with a DNR. So it's a very integral process that we've been working with the DNR back and forth. We're still working with them to have final sign-off and approval of our plans, but anytime we touch anything on this site, it gets very complicated very quickly. And even after the project's done, we still have to work with the DNR anytime we dig on this site. So some of the challenges that have grown since we've started this project, again, a lot has to do with the level of contamination of this soil and other materials, rubble and sawdust and everything else that's buried on that site. There's much more of it and there's much more high contamination. It's also contaminated the groundwater, so any groundwater that we work with on the site, we actually have to remove from site. We can't just create a holding pond there. We are waiting for the final decision from the DNR, but it's so bad, in fact, that we may have to take it out of state, possibly even out of country. So that's a lot of extra transportation costs to move those materials. The bad soils has created a stronger foundation system that we need to use to build and make sure nothing moves while the building is up in there, which was not expected. Again, the utilities, because of the soil condition, we can't just put the utilities in and cover them up and leave them like a normal projects. We have to actually have a support system for the site as a whole and under a building, mainly because we have to cover a vapor barrier with the contaminated soils that are left. And anytime we have an issue with the utility, we would have to break that vapor barrier, which would be a real problem. The vapor barrier is there for the methane gas system that we have to put in that will alleviate the methane gas and also allow us to monitor the methane gas on an ongoing basis. So there's a lot of challenges, things we can solve with time and money, but that were much larger than we all had anticipated. We are excited that we can be a part of cleaning up this brown field. I think we have a plan to do it, but it's growing on us and become much more complicated. So I guess kind of to wrap it up here, we're excited to be here. We have a plan for services for healthcare. We remain dedicated to the site. We're going to keep working on these soil issues and building issues. We are coming to the city to ask for your assistance in these costs for these issues to get there with the TID district that's been created. So with that, we'll open up to any questions or thoughts, if you may have.
Councilmember Esslinger, followed by Councilmember Builo.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, at what point did you determine, first of all, I don't know what the, how much it's going to cost to mitigate these issues and circumstances, so I don't know if you have that number. And at what point did this come to the, pardon the pun, come to the surface where you came to this determination?
Yeah, it's been a complicated process with the DNR that's then affected our construction plans, that then affects our estimating budget and kind of round and round even to what the ongoing operation of the building and requirements will be. So it's been complicated to manage, so the timeline part, we knew there was going to be something, but we had to get more information on the soils and then submit it to the DNR. They have to have time to review it, so it's a long process. The number that we are looking at right now is about $4.5 million more than what our project can support, so we're looking for ways to make up that gap right now.
Okay. So then, rather be a rather simple question. Without this TIF assistance, the project cannot move forward, is that what you're saying?
At this time, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, just for clarification?
Sure.
This is an existing TID district already. It's TID 29. It was created in 2016 as part of the Morgan Partners' proposed plans for that mixed-use development. So it's, the life of the TID is 2016 to 2042. So you know, we did hear it's about $4.5 million worth of costs, but due to the timing of how much life is left in the TID, I, at this time, just based on the proposed value, we don't believe that it would recoup all of those costs. So that's just something I just want council to make sure that you're aware of.
We have Councilmember Builo, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Thank you. As you mentioned, that it's been a lifecycle for that property there that you guys are building on, do you, I think it bears the question, do you know what the source of that contamination was that you guys are dealing with right now?
I think there's a couple of different things that we're dealing with. I don't have the exact, a lot had to do with the Wood Door Company that was there before and basically burying excess materials on site, but there's a number of, that's just one example.
Okay. And then this is, you know, obviously a big picture one is, you know, when we look at different projects like this, surprises do come up, but we want to mitigate those as much as possible. Was there something that was missed in the pre-planning phase or something that could have been done for us in the future to not have this be a surprise, or was there a test that, that we should have required or anything like that?
Yeah, it's interesting in that we had our eyes wide open. There was a number of developers that had worked on this site in the past, and so there was, I would say, surface-level data, what we thought was there, what the history was. But when we got more serious about actually doing a project and more soil borings, deeper soil borings, more analysis, it was just a lot larger than anyone realized. Also, rules changed with the DNR over time, what you can have, what you can't, what you can leave on site and just cap, or what you actually have to truck off to a landfill. And so those things can change over time. So we had some data and we knew there was going to be issues, but the further we dug in, those issues were bigger than we thought.
Mr. Mayor, I would also point out that the TIF plan, that's our, as Ms. Nyforth mentioned, the TIF plan anticipated that we would need to do environmental remediation. We didn't know the extent to which it was going to be, but that was anticipated and that's, that's why the TIF was created in the first place. So it's the Morgan Door Company and all the sawdust, I mean, we're called Sawdust City for a reason. And so it's a combination of unstable soils as well as soils that are contaminated. So there's, there's going to be a lot to be hauled up site.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Mr. Ford.
Sure. I guess I'm at it all surprised that there was environmental issues. I think that type of thing is super hard to pin down to begin with. You really don't know what you're going to get until you actually start doing those soil borings and doing the Phase 1, Phase 2 of that site. So I am really happy for this use. I do think it's a need in the center city. More of a curiosity question, do you guys know employment range you guys are looking at?
Based on the services that we're looking to provide within the community, we're looking at approximately 60 staff members for your work.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, this is more for Director Nyforth. So we'd be putting a TIF here on a tax-exempt property?
So actually, hospitals are a little unique. Their part of the buildings are tax-exempt, but the other parts are taxable. So we go through that right now with the Aurora Hospital and with Ascension here. So typically, like the ORs, emergency rooms, those are tax-exempt, but any like doctors' offices and clinics, those are taxable. So we've worked with our assessor and our contractor who helps us with the commercial values and, and some of the representatives to kind of figure out, get an estimate of what that value would be.
Okay. Do we know when we'll, we'll get that? Or do you have that?
Right now, and I put the disclaimer out there, it's just with the information that we have, it's just under $6 million for the taxable portion of it. So that's what we base the figures off of as far as how much increment could be generated for the remainder of years in the TID.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Esslinger.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Maybe for the staff. So what's the next step then? Are you doing an analysis on this, a recommendation, good idea, bad idea?
I think that's the first one since you've been back in the council, Mr. Esslinger. So the council policy now is that a presentation is made by the developer prior to a formal application. So now they will provide that very information you just asked about. We will take that and then we will have a closed session to discuss terms of negotiation that council may wish to give us based on the information they provide. So I can't promise it's going to be the next meeting, but I know they are on a, they are kind of on a fast track. It looks like his head's saying, oh, yeah, you're going to have it. So our goal will be, we do have three weeks between meetings, so that's probably gives you that extra week to work on that. So we'll be providing that to you and we anticipate a closed session on February 13th.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Builo.
Thank you. Do you feel like you're at a point now where, like, you know, I'm not going to promise you four and a half or anything like that, you know, but that you know the extent of it, or is there a possibility, obviously there's always, but that we're going to keep finding more stuff? Or do you think the four and a half is going to make it happen?
Yeah, and we've done a lot of homework. Obviously, being in the development world a long time, once you start digging into the ground, you find all kinds of things you don't want to find, but that's why you have a contingency line item to get you through things. The amount of work we've done, the amount of work we've done with the DNR at this point, I think we feel really good that that's the number that's going to get us, get us there.
Still excited for this project, as Councilmember Stevenson mentioned, you know, putting this in the central city. Your stats bore it out, right, with significant population east of 41, having to travel, you know, can be significant distance for some services. I think this is great for central city, east side as well, getting those, those types of services back close to home for them. Overall, all-in project cost estimate is roughly?
$86 million.
Okay. Appreciate it a lot. I'll be, I'm excited to see, see this move forward and see the next steps, but appreciate you being here and presenting to us this evening. Thank you. All right, next up, assistance statements to council. I have no one registered to speak to council this evening. Moving on to consent agenda. I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, if you'll please take the role.
Hayes? Aye. Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugabauer?
Aye.
Curate seven?
Next up, pending ordinances, ordinance 24-40, approve zone change from General Agricultural Extraterritorial District A to ETZ to Single Family Residential Extraterritorial District R1 ETZ for a property located at 4744 County Highway K in the town of Algoma. Extraterritorial Zoning Committee recommends approval. Take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Any discussion? Please take the role in 2440.
Hayes? Aye. Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugabauer?
Aye.
Curate seven?
Ordinance 24-41, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay to institutional district for the property located at 425 North Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion?
Hayes? Aye. Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugabauer?
Aye.
Curate seven?
Next up, our new ordinances. We don't anticipate any action on the next three items. First up, ordinance 24-42, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on designated streets and alleys. Congress Avenue, Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-43, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on designated streets and alleys for Panukwa Street. Transportation Committee recommends approval as well. And final new ordinance for the night, ordinance 24-44, amend section 27A-2 of the municipal code pertaining to prohibited right turns at the intersections of North Main Street, Harrison Street and New York Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. On to new resolutions, moving right along. Resolution 24-45, renewal of agreement with Emergency Medical Services Medical Director.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role in 24-45.
Hayes? Aye. Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugabauer?
Aye.
Curate seven?
Resolution 24-46, appropriate ARPA funds for specific 2024 infrastructure projects. Take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? I see none from us, but the finance director has made his way up here. Is there something you'd like to share on the topic? A reminder of what we have left over, maybe would be good.
Okay. Tonight, the resolution is appropriate another $595,000. Attached to the resolution is a listing of those projects where we're making changes to the 2024 project for your consideration. If you were to adopt the resolution tonight, there's still $1.7 million, and I'm working on another resolution that'll be presented in February to take some projects out of the CIP that was designated for debt, which we're going to ask for your consideration for upper projects, and that'll be a feature item for your consideration. But for this evening, we're looking to appropriate $595,000 identified in the resolution and in the memo for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
And I just would answer any questions on any of the specific projects.
I see none. City clerk, please take the role in 24-46.
Hayes? Aye. Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugabauer?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curate Seven?
Resolution 24-47, approve conditional use permit for an institutional use at 425 North Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the conditional use permit? Please take the roll.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curate Seven?
Resolution 24-48, approved blight designation and land acquisition for property located at 1203 Ashgash Avenue. The RDA recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Acquiring this, actually City Manager, Development Director Nyforth. Briefly, this acquisition, it's in a key area for us. Can you, for those at home, maybe you can, you can say why this is important for us.
It is. This is an area, an intersection of the Ashgash Ave and Sawyer Street. And if anybody is from Ashgash and has driven there, you know it is a challenging intersection. So it's long been the city's goal to realign that intersection. So RDA has actually had a very big part of it and acquiring properties as they became available. So from a staff perspective, this property also had quite a few code violations. And unfortunately, we are continuing to get noncompliance. So really, it is a win-win situation for the city in this situation.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's worth pointing out, too, there's nobody living there currently.
That is correct.
Appreciate the extra info. See, clerk, if you please take the roll on 24-48.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curate Seven?
Final resolution for the night, resolution 24-49, approve professional services agreement from Short Elliott Hendrickson for the architectural services for fire training center for Ashgash Fire Department.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll on 24-49.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curate Seven?
All right, that concludes our action items for the evening. Moving into council discussion, direction of the City Manager, as well as future agenda items. First up, council discussion, this one's me. In your packets this evening, there was a memo, couple pages with a little bit of information. For those listening at home, I'm going to paraphrase a little bit of this. I won't, I won't read it word for word, I promise. This is regarding, having a discussion regarding the mayor selection process in the city of Ashgash and discussion on moving away from an elected mayor to more of a council-selected, council-selected president, really. Since about the 1950s, mid-1950s, city of Ashgash has operated under a city manager form of government. And what that means is we hire a professional city manager to run our day-to-day operations. City Manager Mark Roloff is our, you know, he's our chief executive. He runs this operations. He's our sole employee. If you're talking corporate world, we're the board of directors, you know, he's the president and chief executive of the company. He executes the vision that, that we put forth, handles the day-to-day operations and as such. Being one of those Chapter 64 communities in the state of Wisconsin, we are the only one with an at-large elected mayor. This includes communities such as Fond du Lac, Janesville, Beloit, these are some of our sister communities in this, in the state that, that operate in a very similar fashion and those, those places have a fully elected council and then a self-selected president as their leader. The reason for bringing this up, there does, I kind of put it in here, you know, we are unique in that, in that aspect. Unique usually leads to some advantages. In this case, I don't see it as, as an advantage to us having a directly elected mayor. It creates unnecessary confusion locally, regionally, and within the state and beyond our state's borders as well. There is a significant portion of the population that does not know that when they elect a mayor, they're not running the show. The mayor of Ashgash is the leader of this council, leads us, its biggest function is leading these meetings, does have other, other roles such as making recommendations for appointments to boards and commissions, subject to full council approval. But quite honestly, beyond that, that is the role. There, there isn't a whole lot more than that. The mayor of Ashgash doesn't speak for the city of Ashgash. Our chief executive, our city manager, is the only one empowered to speak on behalf of this community. The only time, for example, and I'm trying to speak in terms of the mayor and the spot of mayor, not me. The only time I get to speak for the full council is if, you know, four of us say, Matt, go do this and gives, gives permission to, to speak on our behalf. Otherwise, it's all the individuals' opinions that should be, you know, relayed into the community. Trying to be a good steward and trying to, to sell Ashgash well and be a good steward and be a good face of Ashgash, of course, but there is only one person empowered to speak on this community's behalf and that's the city manager. And it can be a dangerous assumption if we allow that, that perception to continue. It has, it has been in play for quite a while. Some of the instances, without getting into specifics, I gave some examples. You know, we have state officials reaching out to the mayor of Ashgash instead of reaching out to the city manager's office for commentary or guidance or to inform the, the city of decisions and information from the state level. We have media contacts. You know, if something bad were to happen in this community, God forbid, it won't be me in front of the camera taking the questions. I'll be right next to him, you know, or whoever would be mayor, I hope would be right next to him. But the city manager, Mark Roloff, currently, or whoever is the city manager, is the one speaking on behalf of this community. Empowered to negotiate on our behalf, right? Even internally, lack of clarity between the functions of executive functions and legislative functions, as well as just the electors not knowing who their, who their true leader is. These are some of the examples of, of things I know I've experienced, other mayors have as well, in the recent and, and long past as well. It was interesting to note, as I was putting this together, in the January 24 League of Municipalities monthly publication, there's, there's a small segment in there regarding policymaking versus administration. And it talked about, you know, council members and board members, you know, they make policy, they set budgets, and then it's up to, in this case, our community, the city managers, to follow through on that. And having that respect of the boundaries between the mayor, in this case, and the city manager. When somebody thinks mayor, hears the term mayor, that is natural, unless, unless you're in the know, it's natural to believe that, you know, that person is now in charge. They've been elected to lead that community. Appleton, Green Bay, Milwaukee, Madison, any of those communities have that function, have that form of government and we don't, and it does lead to significant confusion. I've laid out a, a suggestion, I don't need to go too far into that, but basically that instead of electing, in the odd years, instead of electing three council members and one mayor, the public would just elect four council members. And just like the school board, just like the county board, we would then go through a process where we select who we deem as our best leader at that time to just, to keep us moving forward, keep us on track, keep us organized. It's a process that works well, that works very well throughout the state, works well locally, and it can help better align us with our peers and set us up for more success in the future. Organizational and operationally, we're out of alignment and it, and it creates unnecessary problems and confusion within, within local government as well as state, you know, state level. One of my concerns actually is into the, hopefully in the very far future, at some point, a council will be selecting a new city manager. I hope it's a long way from now, we've got a great one and I want him to stick around as, for many, many more years. But at some point, we'll have to. And if we continue with our current form and this elected mayor spot, it creates confusion and it creates a, an unnecessary questioning within even those who would be applying for the role. I worry about getting the best qualified candidates if they believe our form of government isn't strong and isn't unified behind them. If there's any question of who's running the show, it will lessen the quality of the candidates that we could potentially be receiving during that process. So those are some, some of my thoughts, some of my concerns. I've laid out some other things during the memo. I've spoken enough. I assume there hopefully is some questions, commentary, and I'll open the floor. Don't all? If you hear a pin drop, no. Councilmember Bulo, you go right ahead.
I was, I was trying not to speak first because I wanted to hear other people's thoughts and ideas on this, but I can't allow silence.
Well, sometimes somebody's got to get started, right?
As well as other people can. So I, I definitely understand where you're coming from this. I have a couple, you know, concerns about it, of course, because it's not going to be clean either way. Some of those are, would it be better to educate about what the role of mayor is in Ashgash versus changing the name of it, changing the vernacular? Because one of my concerns with that is that it's still not going to lead to the clarity that we're hoping for. Because I know as a council member, I get asked questions all the time like, hey, why don't you, you know, help me get a taco truck over here? Or, hey, can you make this bridge go faster? Or, you know, we, we've gotten some emails recently that are completely out of our jurisdiction. So even changing that title of, of mayor or, or council president, I don't know if it's going to solve that. So instead of attacking it from a different way. So that'd be my first. And then the second is because it was put in by referendum, where I know we, we got some information on that today, but it just feels disingenuous to the, the people that did vote it in as a referendum if we voted out. So those are my concerns that I wanted to bring up.
Councilmember Ford, then followed by Deputy Mayor Erickson.
Yeah, I think that's me. I'll try it quick. I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. If you look at our, our code and what the mayor's duties actually are, they're procedural. Matt said a lot of this, but he's the presiding officer with no veto power, presides over the meetings, announces quorum, receives motions, can make proclamations like he did tonight that were given to you for the, for the transit equity. And I think the bigger issue here is, and you know, I've been here four years, it's just looking at the, some of the role confusion and some of the conflict that it can create having an elected mayor as well as a city manager. Frankly, I just think we don't call the position what it really is, which is a council president. Makes sense from a good governance standpoint to us to have the, have the council select the council president because it really is a position that's serving your fellow council members with these limited procedural matters. I'd be worried if the mayor didn't want it. This has come up before and I've always said that, well, only if the current mayor supports it, because it can't be about an individual, it's about creating a foundation for us to have a well-functioning city. So I commend the current mayor for bringing this, this forward and I'm certainly willing to, willing to support this because I think it makes all the logical sense in the, in the world. So thanks.
W. Mayor Erickson, and then Councilmember Stevenson.
Thanks. So I'm appreciative that you've brought this up and, you know, I do agree, there's a lot of confusion in, in roles and, and the public's understanding. And maybe this is opening up a, a can of worms, but to back it up a little bit, I think having a discussion about like, what's the, what's the need and function that we have as a body? What are we, what's kind of the role that we're trying to meet? You know, I think if we go down the, the route of this debate, I think we need to really take a look at what needs do we have in order to make decisions and function, have a well-functioning council? And if anything has changed since the last referendum in 2004. So yeah, I think having a thorough understanding of what do we need in order to do our jobs well, whether that is an elected mayor, whether that is a, a self-selected council president, I think it's important to have a good understanding about that. But I agree, there's, I think there's advantages and disadvantages to, to both options.
Councilmember Stevenson? I'll let Miss Restler.
Sorry. I guess I, I don't disagree with anything you said. I, the only, I go back and forth on this one. I, I think procedurally, it definitely makes sense from a process point of view, but then I, as Councilmember Member Bulo kind of brought up, that it did go to referendum and I have a hard time telling voters of past that because it went to referendum, now we're going to make this administrative decision. So I, I guess, I wanted to ask Lynn, I, I got the, I was at another meeting when you kind of sent over your email, but procedurally, if we went through this, if we went to changing from mayor to council president, what is the process behind that? What, what would we have to do as a, as a board?
You have several options to do it.
Sure.
It's up to you which way you would want to do it. You can pass an ordinance and basically say, we're passing it. If someone wants to, to bring a referendum and require a referendum on it, that, that's one way. You can pass the charter ordinance and put it to referendum yourselves, say, we're directing you to put it to referendum. You can not pass the ordinance and say, just go to referendum and whatever the referendum decides, that's what we'll do. Not missing one.
Was any, was anybody around when we did the referendum? Do, do we have, I guess, why was it done that way? I, I, you know?
I don't remember, do you?
It sounds like.
I, I had to look up to make sure I.
Sure.
I can give a brief, I'll try to be brief, synopsis of what happened. Essentially, I brought forward to the council, I think I got this right, please don't go back and correct me on this because I could be wrong, but I brought forward a resolution or an idea to change to a manager form. That came to the council for discussion and through the council discussion, it got whittled away and a whole different thing got created at the council level. Lynn, correct me if I'm, if I'm going astray here. So what, what happened then to the, what the council essentially did is they allowed a referendum to go to the public to have not what I brought forward, but to have an elected mayor. And so the referendum question, I think it was actually very simple, do you want to have an elected mayor? And in round numbers, 15,000 people said yes and 14,000 people said no. So the people, the citizens of Ashgash were allowed to make the decision on what they wanted to do, what, whether they wanted to stay with what they had or whether they wanted to elect a mayor.
The only thing I would add is there were, there was a lot of, there were like multiple options.
It went back and forth.
Yeah.
It went back and forth. And so if I can just, I'll just, I guess, are you done or do you want me to segue into what I'm thinking?
Yeah, but I, I guess, but it didn't have to be done that way, I guess, is what I'm with the, okay.
Correct, it didn't have to be done.
So I guess I'll just segue into my, my thoughts on this. You know, I, I certainly understand, you know, where the mayor's coming from. He has an opinion of what should be and how we get there. I think we've all, except for Councilmember Hayes, but I'm sure she has her opinions. I want a council person's decision to be very, very small. I don't want one of seven, or seven people to decide what the form of government is for 70,000 people. That is something that needs to be voted on by those people and I think Councilmembers Stevenson and Bulo were, were kind of addressing that. And that, that's where I am. I have absolutely no problem if someone wants to come, if a council member wants to put I have absolutely no problem if someone wants to come, if a council member wants to put something together and suggest that this, we put this out to referendum, I would vote in favor of that. I have no problem with it. The only thing I would ask then is if, if we're going to allow that, if we would allow another council member or a citizens group, if they wanted, if a council person wanted to sponsor something, would we allow that same right in respect to someone else that wanted to put something out for a referendum? If you want people to have choices, the more choices I think you have are better. So not in favor of the council doing it on their own. Referendum, absolutely, no problem with it. Will we allow something else? So that's kind of where I'm at.
Councilmember Ford, followed by Councilmember Beulah.
Yeah, I just, you know, looking through back and forth, the way the question was asked to you, I think gives us a little bit of, a little bit of homework. If we do ever get to the point where we want to do a referendum on this, we got to be specific. Because the way the question read was, are you for a part-time salaried mayor? So it really had, great, I mean, I think that, I don't think I'm telling anything out of turn here, that this was an outgrowth of a desire amongst some folks to actually change our form of government to a strong mayor system. So this referendum came out with a vague question, talking about a part-time salaried mayor that could be interpreted in many ways. So I know that we're talking here about form of government, but I would argue we're really not talking about form of government. We're talking about whether we call, all right, do we elect a council president? Or, you know, at large, or do we elect a council president as a body? This is not about shifting forms of government. So I think we got to be really careful with our language if we're having a public debate about this. And certainly, if we're going to put this at referendum, we have to make sure we're very clear that we're not talking about creating a mayor that has executive powers.
Councilmember Beulah.
Real quick question. I don't know if I saw it in your presentation. Would you still propose then that the council president, if we want that route, would get the small salary bump that the mayor gets now?
I had no intention of changing, quite honestly, anything other than.
The title.
It's really title. It's the role itself still is the same because that, the role is a president role, not a mayor role. But, yeah, I hadn't thought about the pay at all, but the role doesn't change.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate questions. I appreciate honesty and dialogue. At no way did I think, you know, I'd have a super majority tonight saying, yes, you know, let's move forward quickly. You go.
I don't mean to cut you off.
No, you go right.
I do think there's a merit in doing what kind of Lindsay suggested was maybe digging into what those, it sounds like there's a little confusion as to what your guys' roles are. And I think being able to define those in a meaningful way is probably going to do loads of good for our board and for the city manager as well. Yeah, so I mean, regardless of where we go on this, if it's a council president, if it's a mayor, I think doing that exercise would really help.
Okay.
And also being able to show, just, I think from my perspective, being able to show me what, I guess, what you are responsible for opposed to maybe what those gray areas are that we're running into would.
Sure.
Would help as well.
Sure. No, as I was saying, appreciate the dialogue, you know, the discussion on it, considering it, you know, given, just giving it some thought, that's much appreciated. I want you to know that. Then try not to dwell on, you know, things that have been done in the past. This is about, for me, it's about making sure that it's setting us, it's saying this future councils, future city managers, and quite honestly, the city of Oshkosh up for success into the future. I want to make sure that whatever this is, it outlasts us and it's successful and operationally, we're sound and strong. So that's the basis for where I'm coming from on it. To Mike's, to Councilmember Ford's point, you know, back in 2004, you know, looking at the original motion that was put out there, as Councilmember Restleer kind of alluded to, to what it turned into be, there was a significant difference between what was put forth as an idea and what it ended up being. It was, it was, it was cut quite considerably from what originally was formulated. To Councilmember Ford's point, and having been a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, I remember the time. And there was, you know, there was this thought, this movement of, at that time, moving away from our city manager, manager council form of government to more of a, you know, mayor aldermatic form of government. This is in no way suggesting that. In fact, it's exactly the opposite. It's only trying to solidify. Our current form is the right form. It is the most successful form. It leads to, it's well documented, it leads to the most successful communities in the state of Wisconsin. So I think that, those are my final thoughts on it. Any other questions? Otherwise, next steps on this particular topic, if there was some support for at least a further discussion? You know, it'd be a topic for, to Councilmember Stevenson's point, you know, if we needed to have some more dialogue, we can have it as a future agenda item for further discussion, if that's something of interest to further clarify. Okay, we can start there, that's fine. I see some heads nodding, so I'll keep working on information and present when ready. Okay. Next up, status of available combination Class B licenses. This would be city staff, I think.
Yeah, I think that's me, Mr. Mayor. I put a memo in the agenda packet that pretty much mirrors the newsletter article that we published a couple of weeks ago. The, the interest in Class B licenses has increased greatly during 2023, so much so that we are down to two available combination Class B liquor licenses. We do have some reserve licenses, but those, that additional license for the citywide one is $10,000, which I believe the, what's the price for a regular combination Class B license? And the quote is like.
Four, $4.50, I think, that just recently went up.
Yeah.
The state statute.
So it's significantly more expensive. And then there was a state law change a couple of years ago where cities could identify a designated economic development area. We identified a portion of the Sawdust District. Those licenses are $30,000 each. So the difference between those reserve licenses that I just described and the ones that Ms. Bartlett described, there's night and day differences between the two. So we have two combination licenses left. We have two active applications that have been submitted. And we have at least one more forthcoming if they haven't already, haven't already turned it in. I'm not sure if that.
They haven't turned it in? I've had more than one inquiry.
So once the newsletter article got out there, which was somewhat intentional because I wanted to point out that these are in there. And I've had discussions with the folks over on, along Highway 21, the new area over there. And they've said, you know, we're interested in one, we're interested in one. So they were the first persons to contact me about this. So in the past, we had, we would have a parade of people coming before council and then council would have the difficult job of trying to decide which, who got which licenses. We tried to add some, some economic development element to the application and ask them to provide some information. And they have to a certain degree, you know, how many jobs are going to get created? How much tax base are you adding to the community? Things like that. And the difference is frankly, very different from one application to the next. If somebody is just simply taking over a former bar or restaurant, it's a lot easier to put very little money into it and get started versus a brand-new restaurant tavern along Highway 41. We are currently going through a process to identify any licenses that are not being used. And there's only one way to do that. It's just good old sleuth figuring out if people are using these licenses or not. Frankly, we're not coming up with a lot of them that are not being used. So I don't think we're going to find a good number of them. I would be surprised if we had more than one that we would bring back and say, this one's been underutilized, not, I shouldn't say underutilized, not utilized. And the council should remove that. The council gave us direction to do that a few years ago, and we've been doing that. And I think we, we pretty much did a cleanup of that a few years ago. And that's why I don't think we're finding many in this go-around. The other licenses are partially an issue of underutilized. And there are places that have a full combination Class B liquor license and they only sell beer or wine. And there are other ways to go through that. And then Ms. Bartlett had been doing some research and finding that the legislature is considering changing the state law that may reclassify that. And there might be some opportunities that some of these combination Class B licenses could be given up if the definition of fermented malt beverage changes to more than beer. And so that's, that's going through the process right now. I can't tell you, Diane told me about it, and I hadn't done any research on it until she pointed it out. So we're, we're just learning about those. So that might change, and I don't think that's, maybe the earliest is April that we learn anything from that. But in the meantime, I don't think it's in our best interest to be issuing the licenses until we see what other ones are out there. And maybe ask council to give us some criteria about what you may want to look for. I don't think that the days of, frankly, we, the staff called them beauty pageants, where you literally had applicants parade themselves in front and you had to pick winners and losers that very night. Part of what staff does is do the difficult work to review these and, and just give you some unbiased, this is the economic impact, and that's something you may want to take a look at. You may want to take a look at proximity to residential areas because every once in a while, you'll have somebody come up and speak and say, this bar is making a lot of noise and they're in my neighborhood, what can you do about it? Frankly, you can't do a lot with, once you've been given a liquor license, it's extremely difficult to take that away unless there is a flat-out violation of the law. And it's a difficult thing to do. It's probably the next most difficult thing after issuing ones with competing people. So I'm bringing it to your attention this evening to let you know that I've directed staff not to issue, not to bring forward any liquor licenses because I think we have to need, we have, we need to find out what, number one, the demand is out there. Because there is a demand along Highway 21, we're getting more, more demand. And then can we, can we frankly rustle up any more liquor licenses with them being underutilized? I think part of what we're going to end up doing is doing a little education and demonstrating to some of these establishments, maybe you don't have the right license and would you be willing to turn it back to help free it up? I don't know if a bar is necessarily going to want to do that. A full combination Class B, though, is not for traditional bars that serve liquor or anything. But we've got some that are, you know, issuing, they're, all they're selling is beer out of a can. And they have a full combination Class B, totally underutilized. But we have no right to take that from them. That would not be warranted. So can we do some education and maybe free up some of these licenses? Because it does become an economic development issue when we're trying to do this. So happy to answer any questions based on that long-winded explanation.
If you don't mind, I'm actually, usually I try to go last, but I'm just going to jump in first here. Would you mind, I don't want to assume anything with, with councilmembers. We had some newer ones that joined us just this last election cycle. Old process, you've mentioned it very briefly, the beauty pageant compared to what we do now. Maybe just a little bit on that compared to what we're trying to do and why we're doing it the way we've been doing it the last about four or five years. I remember it changed right before, right after I got on. And then part two, you talked about the non-renewal that you've been, you know, we start that process in your memo in March. Just a brief explanation to non-renewal versus revocation because that's a process for us that we have to go through. And you mentioned economic development. And I wonder if, you know, if this isn't something where we should be working with our chamber partner? And just having them also help us in this, within the business community of, you know, educating and seeing if, if that's the right, if their membership is using it, you know, to its fullest capabilities and seeing what, what they can do to help us in this, this area too.
I'll go in reverse order because I think it's going to need, it's going to need some education because we don't want to, we don't want anybody to feel like their business is being threatened, especially if the long-established type of business. But I think there's some educating we can do and perhaps the chamber would be willing to, to do that. I can certainly talk to Mr. Kleiman about that. The, the other part, the.
Revocation versus non-renewal.
The revocation. Revocations are different than non-renewals. If someone doesn't renew their license and process it through the clerk's office, we still go through to give them due process, a non-renewal so that unless they physically come in and say, I'm not applying for a new license, here's my license, I'm done. That doesn't happen real often. But the idea behind that would be that we would have to do a non-renewal for whatever reason. They didn't apply, they didn't follow the rules, and we're just saying, you know, we're not going to renew that license. And, and I think the city attorney strongly recommends going through that due process so that there's no question that they were afforded all of their rights. And then the beauty pageant question. Just before you got on the council, Mr. Mayor, we had a good number of available licenses. And, and I had this experience before in other communities. So we could essentially free up because we had done that enforcement part where we said, if you're not using it, literally not using it, we're going to take it away. And most of those people didn't even challenge us because they were, they weren't even in, they were in existence or they said, well, I'm trying to sell the building, but they've been selling it for five years. Think of the Packers Pub over there on, um, 20th and South Park. That was a good example of that. The idea is that if you're not using it, then you should, you should surrender it. And so we went through the process, gave them their due process and, and took it away. I think the last couple of years, there's a little bit more, there's a little more interest. Highway 21, I think, has been a big part of that. Interstate 41, you know, think of the Chili's Restaurant, things that got filled in. So now we are just filling in with more dense usage of liquor licenses along our major corridors. And those are popular corridors, so people want to fill them in. But we still have some of the mom and pop bars that are still operating. And, and they're still doing their thing and more power to them. And we can't, we don't have the right to take it away from them either, nor would I even suggest that. So really, it's a matter of can we free up some through education and avoid going through the beauty pageant process? If any of you have gone through the Leadership Oshkosh program, that used to be a feature on Government Day. And it became, because of this, it, we did away with it both in Leadership Oshkosh as well in real life because it was no longer reality. I don't know if the council's going to want to go through that. I think you, you know, Mr. Restleer may remember some of that, just how difficult it was sometimes to, to do that and say yes or no. I think education, tighter criteria, and then maybe even developing with some council direction, some type of, you know, evaluation system to, to take a look at these things. How heavy do you want to weigh economic development? It's not the only thing. How heavily do you want to weigh proximity to residential areas? Because it's not exactly a zoning issue. If it's, if it's zone commercial and it's next to a residential area, from a zoning standpoint, it's okay. But do you want that in your neighborhood where you've got an establishment open till, till 2:00 a.m.? So those are the tough things. But if we can ease some of that, we'd be happy to do it.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'd just say beyond education, as an economic development issue. I mean, I think the most promising path is finding these underutilized uses. If we can find a way to incentivize that, I mean, that'd be something I'd be willing to entertain as a council. Because I get, we're stuck in this cycle where even though these licenses are public goods, people have used them for private benefit. And, right, that's a problem that was created 30 years ago, nothing we can do about it now. But perhaps having a little bit incentive there for people to get their licenses aligned with what they're actually doing could be a path to freeing some up.
All right.
I just, you know, keep reflecting on it and, you know, we'll shoulder the, you know, we're not going to process them right away, but we'll work on the education program. I'll talk to Mr. Kleiman about what we can do because I think that's part of it and what Ms. Bartlett pointed out in terms of the, the change in the law. If we can take advantage of that and free them up, that would really, extra five licenses would eliminate this problem for you. But I don't have the ability to do that for you.
I do think it's worth pointing out, had we been operating under the, quote-unquote, the old system, we would have been in this situation four or five years ago. And it'd be that every single time a new place wants to open up, we don't have one for them. So I do, your foresight and your, your long-term thinking on getting us to change practice, you know, five, six years ago, was well-placed. And it's definitely extended our, extended that timeline, but now it's just. It was going to catch up at some point, so. All right, if there's nothing else on that one, we can go to Future Workshop. We have a strategic planning session that's an all-day session, March 4th, 2024. We are at Lake Shore Park Four Seasons Building. Get to see our newest year-round public shelter that people can rent. It'd be a great facility to, to host us. Lots will be provided. Questions, please reach out to City Manager's office and he can help you with that. Any councilmember announcements or statements?
I do.
You go right ahead.
Sorry, I almost forgot. I was supposed to do a plug here for, it's Oshkosh Restaurant Week. Goes through the 28th, so there's still time to participate. And thus far, it's been pretty successful. 29 restaurants are participating. There's over 30 reviews in the Support Local Face Group group. I haven't read them, but I assume they're positive. It's radio coverage, media attention, so definitely a nice, nice community week and a good chance to go get some good food.
Yes, visit our local establishments and they do have liquor licenses at most of them. So that's a good, it was a good combination of topics. Councilmember Restleer.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a plug to the Grand Opera House. I, last weekend or weekend before, they had a show on there, a little group that did singing and videos of the 70s, the songs of Billy Joel and Elton John and commercials and people that were, you know, important, I guess, or rock stars and all that in the 70s. And I grew up, I was born in 1965, so all that stuff was very, brought back a lot of, a lot of good memories. And, but then I had to sit there and think to myself, God, that was like 40, 50 years ago. So while I enjoyed it, it was kind of depressing, so. Thanks.
Great plug.
Yeah. Yeah.
Councilmember Bureau, that is a tough act to follow.
Yep. All right. Solutions Recovery Center has been going through a update in renovation, and they're having their grand opening on Saturday, the 27th, public from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. They do really, really great work in this community. And so stop by and support them over on Evans Street. I'm really excited to see it myself, to see what they've done in there and how they're going to be able to help more people.
Excellent. Any other statements or announcements? All right. City Manager Roloff, the rest is yours.
Thank you. I have a handful of things to talk about. It's going to be a busy couple of months, both January and February, with public education regarding the proposal to replace special assessments for street reconstruction. I just wanted to have Jake put up, we're going to have some public information meetings, one in the, one during the day, one during the evening, and then one virtual. Tuesday, January 30th, at 6:00 PM at City Hall, it's a fifth Tuesday, so we're taking advantage of that. And have the evening event there to just educate the public. Anybody can show up. We'll repeat it on Oshkosh Media. Wednesday, January 31st, at 2:00 PM, we're going to have a live question and answer session. We'll be doing it from the Oshkosh Media Studios, but it'll be available for people to, to view and bring in questions. And then we'll, we'll run that one throughout the entire month because it'll be more of a, a structured format. And then Thursday, February 1st, at 10:00 AM. So it's really just giving the ability for people to come in. I don't know how many people are going to, will show up for these different events because it's not the, you know, it's, I fear that people won't want to come until after they get their bill, but we're going to do everything we can to, to get this information out and then keep repeating it through the month of February. Because the ideas for the council have the first reading on this on February 13th, which is three weeks from tonight. And then two weeks after that would be the second reading for consideration. So the idea is to spend the month of February. Towards that end, Mr. Van Gompo and I will be attending a meeting of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors on Friday to talk to them about that. They've weighed in many times in the past, usually against, but I think they recognize that the council's serious about wanting to fix something. So I think they're, they, they want to know more about the combination. So that's just the informational meetings that I wanted to point out. We are putting together some frequently asked questions that will be on our website under Hot Topics. And that will be pretty much the script that we'll be using. And I'll be providing that to you by the end of the week. So you'll have it. It'll be in the newsletter as well. I can certainly talk about some of those things. Several of you, I appreciate it, it gave me some questions in advance. And so, you know, want to be able to talk about those things. But, you know, the special assessments that we're talking about eliminating are just those related to road reconstruction and sidewalk replacement. Those are the, the biggest ones, but it does not include, for example, new utilities such as what was done on Clearville Road that the council approved a couple of weeks ago. And we're still, you know, the council had said, you know, please look at, you know, how we can minimize that impact. But that's, that's not the, that's got to be paid for by the beneficiaries. Replacement sanit, replacement utility laterals by Public Service Commission regulations, those have to be paid for by the very property that benefits from it. So that's, that's another one. So we've got a bunch of frequently asked questions that we're going to put out there. We'll talk about them at the, at the information sessions. And I guess I'd rather just leave it to questions that council members may have that I'm happy to, to answer for you. And I know a lot of them, you just want the public to know about them. So, you know, happy to, to entertain those. And Mr. Van Gompo or Mr. Robbie are also here in case, in case I need some backup.
Yeah. Can you
No, you go right ahead.
Can you speak to the mechanism by the utilities in particular? That's one that's, that's come up, exactly how that will work. It'll be on the rates, correct?
Yes. I mean, essentially, that, that really is more of a finance question, but it's going to be just added to the budget of the utility. So there's not, the mechanism isn't all that elaborate. And I gave myself enough time to get Russ to walk up here.
Yeah, I need lots of time to get up here.
So the mechanism is actually, from an accounting standpoint, when we propose the vehicle registration fee, which will be collected by the state of Wisconsin and then sent to the city, we will be accounting for that in a capital projects fund. And this capital projects fund then would also have, the utilities will be transferring $750,000 from each of the three utilities into that fund. And that'll be used to offset the costs that normally were put on special assessments for road construction projects. So we'll have a separate capital projects fund that'll account for not only the vehicle registration, but we'll just transfer the funds out of the utilities into that fund to make the necessary funding available to, to help support that $3.5 or $3.6 million a year.
Correct. But that, that money comes from rate payers. That's
Correct.
a reduction in the budget for
And I think
And it's not a flat rate or anything. It's actual, just going to be changes to the rates.
Yeah. It's actually a flat dollar amount from their budgets.
Yeah.
But that does impact rates. City Council did approve a rate adjustment for the sanitary sewer earlier this year. That needs to be revisited and adjusted by about 0.25%. So there'll be a slight increase in the sanitary rates. When we did our cash flow analysis, and I thought I had sent that out to council, but we'll get that in the packet with the other one. We looked at both water and stormwater. We anticipate no adjustment for the stormwater rates in 2024. Those will remain at zero. In 2025, we're anticipating a rate adjustment to the stormwater rates of 2.5% in total. Without this funding for helping with the road project, we would not have had to increase our stormwater rates. So that's going up by 2.5. The water rates, the city council does not establish those water rates. We are anticipating that in 2025, the city of Oshkosh will be going back to the Public Service Commission for water rate. And that, the, the difference between not having that transfer and having that transfer in all of the utilities is, is about, you know, 0.25% to 0.5%. So that range varies on year by year. But we've done a 10-year cash flow analysis on all three of our utilities with anticipated rates. And I have the summary schedule that will include in the packet that shows with and without that assessment revenue.
That's helpful. I'm sorry, I don't mean to harp on it, but it strikes me that, I mean, that's, that's the larger funding for source, correct? The VRF is going to get all the attention, but that's
Yeah.
probably long-term going to be much bigger
It's like a 60
VRF is clearly, if you look at, if you look at social media,
Yeah.
the focus is on 40%. The utilities will be 60%.
Yeah. It's like a 60-40 split. 60% coming from the utilities
Yeah.
in the three utilities, and then 40% from the vehicle registration fee.
And this may be more policy, but I mean, it's fair to say that in future years, if the, if the VRF doesn't keep up with cost, increasing cost of road projects, that'll shift that percentage more. I mean, the utility's there as a backup to
Yeah. The, you'll have to continue to evaluate those, that mix when you do your capital improvement plan. But you're right, that the, the negative side of the vehicle registration fee as opposed to a true transportation utility is that as we look at the cost of road construction over a period of time, we're dealing with pricing that's based on market conditions. And those are going up right now. And, and the cost of doing streets and utilities are increasing. So we'll have to continue to evaluate. And so if you get into this pattern, you're going to have to continue to evaluate that vehicle registration fee. And we'll hopefully be in a good spot where that'll be consistent for a number of years. But at some point, you know, there'll be pressures to increase that vehicle registration fee. As we're putting together the proposal right now, we're looking at a $35 vehicle registration fee. When I looked at various communities, it's anywhere from $10 to $40. So we're on the high end to start with. But there are about 38 cities that are using vehicle registration fees in, in the entire state of Wisconsin right now. In addition, there are some counties. So there are some people that may have, and I know in the city of Milwaukee, for example, have a municipal vehicle registration fee and a county vehicle registration fee. So they, they have kind of a, a double whammy, so to speak. But we're not to that level at this point in our recommendation.
Cool.
Thank you.
I see nothing from, else from this side.
We'll be hitting the streets and reporting back to you.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor and City Manager, just one other public comment. You know, if, as we look at this, we do have a 90-day, and we'll, we'll talk about this at the next city council meeting, but we do have a 90-day notification period that we have to get to the Department of Transportation and the vehicle registration folks at the state. So probably looking at, realistically, a July 1 implementation date. But again, I, I need just to remind you that we will have to, at some point in 2024, go back and adjust our sanitary sewer rates by about 0.25% on top of the 6.75 that we did earlier in December for January 1, or February 1. I can't remember the implement, implementation date at this time.
The next one we're working on is the ARPA funds for non-infrastructure projects. And we have some public information meetings scheduled for those. We're, we're just now getting out the application. It's available on our website under Hot Topics. It's also in your agenda packet this evening. The informational meetings are going to be Thursday, February 15th, here at City Hall at 6:00 PM, Friday, February 16th at 10:00 AM at City Hall. And then we'll be doing a similar live Q and A on Oshkosh Media that will run for the, you know, for the time being after that. We are sending out invitations to various nonprofit entities and other groups that have been sort of advocates for nonprofit groups. We're, you know, going to send it to the United Way because they have a lot of nonprofit groups that, community foundation. They've got their own groups of people that they work with, and they're going to send it out to them as well. The application, as I said, is online. We did make some updates to that based on some feedback that we've gotten through the process. And I know there's a lot of questions with that still. Excuse me a second. So our plan is to promote the applications with the various nonprofit entities. I know there's a lot of questions that have come up. And I know, you know, Deputy Mayor Erickson has been, you know, introduced me to a lot of folks, which I do appreciate. And then with presentations come questions, and there's a lot of things there. So the application still talks, and I have, I've developed some review criteria based on what we've done in the past to more formalize it. But, you know, one of the questions came up is, well, are we going to fund operating costs? In the past, you know, we haven't done a lot of operating costs, but we never prohibited it. And we still will not prohibit that, certainly not from consideration. But similar to the conversations that we had with council during the budget workshops, when we discussed Go HNI and the bid, if, if operating costs are going to be done, there has to be an exit strategy so that these funds are not, you know, become dependent on in future years. And in some cases, it's either showing how they are, this will bridge them, or it's really just a bridge project. It may be operating costs, but it's for a short-term thing. We actually did that with the, with Adcap. We gave them $130,000 grant. And it was leveraging funds that they were getting. They just needed to have more people to help literally push money out the door for rental assistance. So, you know, I felt that that was an appropriate use of operating funds because it was one and done, for lack of a better term. And as you heard with the bid's application, the bid was having a strategy to make themselves self-sufficient after three years. They didn't necessarily want to do that, but that was something that, that I felt they needed to do. Council didn't take action on that. Just as an aside, applicants who have previously been considered and rejected are more than welcome to, to reapply. I think that was part of it. Council said, we want to see, you know, a whole group of them. The other big one, I think, that Deputy Mayor pointed out was the use by December 31 of this year, December 31 of '24. That is absolutely our preference, but it's not a requirement. What we're concerned about is somebody getting some funding and then not spending it and saying, oh, I don't need it, so you can use it now, city. Well, the reality is if we don't have it allocated by December 31, '24, and somebody comes in on January 2nd and says, oh, here's the money back, I don't need it, we've lost that money. So we, I want to be very careful that we don't allocate it to something that is sort of iffy on can they spend it at all. Can we do spending through the end of '26? Absolutely yes. But we'll have to take a look at that. So all I put in there was that a preference to spend it by the end of the year is there. I know some of the nonprofits don't think they can pull that off. I think through the application process, we can look at that. And what I did with other applications is bring them in and talk to them about their application. And I'll, and I'll do a shout out to our Community Development Director. Kelly sat in on a lot of these meetings. And while they maybe didn't necessarily meet the criteria that we had under ARPA, Kelly made available Community Development block grant dollars. And a couple of the nonprofits still got some funds from us, but it was more in keeping with what they wanted. So I, I want to continue to do that because our job isn't just to get ARPA money out the door. It's really to meet the needs of these groups. And if we can diagnose what their need is a little better and use Community Development block grants, you know, I wanted to use that too. And, and you can come back to Community Development for block grant funding in future years. So if you do have a long-term item that you need, Community CBG dollars may just be a better use in the first place. I don't want people going dependent on us. And then we say, well, ARPA money's gone. Too bad, so sad. I really don't want to do that, especially to the groups that are developing new ideas and new programs. So we're going to work together on that as well. Any of the other big ones, Lindsay, that you're thinking of? I mean, I got tight timeline. I think I've covered that. It's not just for large capital projects. We did with the first, you know, the first initial funding, all but Adcap was capital. That was just because they were larger chunks of money. But now that we've got about $2.3 million left, you know, can we take small ones? That was the other one you asked me about. We just didn't get small ones. A couple that we did just didn't really meet the criteria, but we're not opposed to that. It's just that we just didn't get them. So if somebody comes in with a $12,000, I think that was the amount to use, certainly we can consider that, especially the one-offs. If it's operating, but it's a one-off, like we get this done, we get over the hump, we're good. I think we can do that. And I think the wisdom of waiting for, see some of the delayed impacts of, of COVID, I, I think that that's really come to pass. So we're going to keep doing that. And the deadline is March 1. And then we'll see where we are. Will we, will we do another round, so to speak? We'll have to unless the council suddenly issues $2.3 million in funds. We may do yet another round. By mid-year, I'm going to get a little lancy if we haven't allocated funds, and I may come back and make some other suggestions. Just in full disclosure, I very well may come back and say, we've got a whole bunch of infrastructure projects that need to get done. And I can use that money very quickly. But I don't want to do that yet. We still have $1.7 million in infrastructure funds, and we've got to use that first. And Mr. Van Gompo's being very careful about making sure that when he brings a project to you, it's going to get done. So, but I'm, I'm not going to rule it out if we, if we haven't doled it out. I have a fiduciary responsibility to come to you and tell you. So that's all I have on that one.
I'll link on the last, this one and the last topic, the, your outreach mechanism. I was here for the first round when we did those in this building, you know, a couple of years ago. But your Q and A, your live Q and A with the Oshkosh Media is something different. And appreciate, you know, just willing to try new things to reach out in different ways. So.
And let me know if you've got any other ideas. I am totally open to, to do this. So there's that. And have you heard enough of me? Urban Townsville, I have the, I have all the information that you, you know, I gave you my bullet points. We're sending letters to our legislators. I spoke to a couple of them at the chamber function last week to let them I spoke to a couple of them at the chamber, uh, function last week to let them know our concerns with it. Um, and so we're going to continue to do that. But I think we have done, we've been very successful and council tonight approved the extraterritorial zoning. We do it well and I kind of told the Senate Committee on Local Government that you need to get along with your neighbors to get these things done. We don't agree on everything, but the extraterritorial zoning we just did tonight is us working with the town to look ahead on land use for the next 20 years and, and do those types of things. So, um, we're going to keep working away on that one. I think the utility stuff is probably off the table now, which was a major concern for Public Works, uh, but that part, uh, it looks like it's off the table. So it's really about land use and we're going to keep plugging away on that. Have your strategic plan dashboard for the fourth quarter there? Um, happy to report that with, uh, Mr. Collins' assistance and the cooperation of County Executive DMO, we have a one-year extension of our intergovernmental agreement on what used to be Route 10, uh, to continue that service. Um, it's more of a cab, it's more of a cab ride back and forth between the NINA and Oshkosh, um, transit centers. And it's, you know, we're, we use our federal, access to federal and state dollars to get that done and we're, we're pleased to be able to keep doing that. And then I have outstanding issues and-
Councilmember Bulo's got a question.
Which one, the-
On the, on the Route 10-
I keep calling it Route 10.
Yeah, same. So I was on the Transit Advisor Board when we, um, approved that. I was wondering if, um, Deputy Mayor, um, how, how has that, the use of that been? Is it, because it's a ride, rideshare program, right?
Uh, yes, I, we got the numbers at our last meeting, which I don't have them with me.
You don't have it memorized?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're probably about 1,000 rides when you take a look at the cost. It's about $25 a ride that we pay and we, we spent about $28,000, so probably about 1,000 rides.
Well, and for, uh, I, I believe we were paying like $90 a rider when we were sending the bus, like it was abhorrent, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, we call it a, we're still calling it a pilot project and just to see if there's other opportunities for that. So, um, the county's going along with it. It's, it's a lot less expensive than it was when we were driving full buses up between us and Nina.
And many times empty buses.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
All right. If there's nothing else from council, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.